Welcome to the regular Tupelo City Council meeting for August 15th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to ask you to stand and I will lead the invocation and Councilwoman Lynn Bryan will lead us in the pledge. So we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the people in this room who represent our city. We thank you for members of the council and members of our administrative team for the city and we ask your guidance in the business that we have tonight. In Christ's name I pray, amen. Can everybody face the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I will call on Councilwoman Nettie Davis to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we will confirm and amend the agenda order, agenda and agenda order with the extradition, item 26 in the matter, albeit 2023-035-AD, Council channel, addition 27 in the matter, albeit 2023-033-WL, North Green Street Substation, addition of item 28 in the matter of approval of contract with Cook and Son LLC for the bid 2023-033-WL to remove 1207 Mount Vernon Street from the item 10-2 in the matter of the demolition of the other items.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all approve. Proclamations, recognitions, and reports, agenda, proclamations, none; recognition, boy, girl scouts, none; employee recognition, none; public recognition, we'll start with Ms. Nettie.
I don't wait.
No? Nothing. Well, I'm gonna wait. Yeah, Mr. Bob.
Yes, I gotta say, I'm glad to see Tanner Newman back there, citizens back there. Glad to see him back at City Hall, councilor.
Glad to be back.
Georgia.
Yes, I also would like to say, welcome back Tanner, and to say to my sorority sister, I am so glad that you will be able to rest easy now. None of that.
I just wanna say that, recognize my daughter, Mississippi Supreme Court appointed Catherine Servati to the Access to Justice Commission and this commission works to develop a unified strategy to improve access to justice in civil legal proceedings for the poor. I'm just really excited that my daughter got appointed to that. I think it happened a month ago, but I'm just now finding out, so congratulations, Mr. Hart.
Chair.
Of course, I will, now, still tied, thunder, I'm assuming with the recognition that's upon us, but I do wanna say, and our COO, Don Lewis, being one of the founding members of the TFC club, it's exciting to see, and we were on, I guess, probably the first club in Tupelo, to see where that club has gone to, and I know he'll, we'll have more details on that, but proud of you girls, and I've got a son that's seven that started in it, so it all comes full circle, so.
I would, well, I just recognize Kim Hannah, who's substituting for Mrs. Shelton as clerk of counsel tonight, and she got her sign, she's a little bit distant from ours, but we recognize her and appreciate her filling in tonight. Public recognitions, mayor's remark.
Yes, Mr. Bob, and we're all glad to see Tanner here, but guys, he's number 23 on the agenda, so he's not back just yet, so. And Chad, you're not gonna steal my thunder, I got a whole page.
I'm good.
Ladies, but this special, special group here tonight, and, you know, looking back on my sports career, and it was all about me, but, you know, the parents sitting in this crowd, they deserve a thank you also, because they're the ones that tote you around and pay for the hotel rooms and all over the southeast United States, so, you know, to the players and parents, I want to say thank you, but just wanna read a little something. This summer, the Tupelo Football Club 2008 girls made history. Tupelo Football Club had a total of five teams representing Mississippi at United States Youth Soccer Southern President's Cup Regionals in June. This event brings top teams from North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, Florida, Alabama, Mississippi, Louisiana, Arkansas, Oklahoma, North and South Texas to compete for a chance to represent the Southern Regional at USYS National President's Cup. Of the five Tupelo Football Club teams participating, the TFC 2004 girls and the TFC 2008 girls both brought home gold and advanced to Nationals in Wichita, Kansas, as the U-19 girls and U-15 girls Southern President Cup Regional Champions. These two teams are the first Tupelo Football Club teams to ever win a USYS Regional Championship and are two of four Mississippi teams to ever attend President's Cup Nationals. At Nationals, the 2008 girls beat New Jersey, Utah, and Michigan to advance to the semifinals where they defeated Colorado. This made them the first Mississippi team to advance out of bracket play in advance to the USYS President Cup National Final. In the final, they narrowly lost to Illinois but finished as finalists on the national stage. In addition, Reese Barbles and Dylan Miller were named to the best 11 team for the U-15 Girls Division. We want to recognize these girls and their amazing performance and encourage them to continue their hard work so they can continue to make history. Congratulations, girls.
Can I get the, can I get you girls to stand, please, and just face, face the camera so TV folks can see, see you here? Congratulations again, thank you, thank you for coming. This time, we will close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Public agenda, public hearings, and the matter of public hearings for lot mowing. Is anyone here to speak to lot mowing? You hear?
Yes, sir.
If you would, come to the podium, if you would state your name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Russell Fox, I'm at 3369 Winchester Circle, here in Tupelo. And I've, I got a, I got an invitation to appear here today, and I'm not sure why, and I'd like to find out more about the process and really kinda air complaint about it, given the fact that I was notified and the properties adjacent to mine, or you couldn't tell whether mine had been mowed versus theirs or vice versa. I've got photographs, if anybody would like to see those as well.
Actually, your, your name is not on our list. You may have, did you have a sign in your yard?
Yes, sir, this is it right here.
Okay, but you mowed, you mowed the grass after?
Well, I mow it regularly.
Okay, so you're questioning the sign being in your yard?
Well, I think it's, I think there was a question of fairness, and I've got photographs of the property next to mine where, as of yesterday, there were, the grass was probably six feet tall, and I think that's a city-mowed property. And that wasn't staked, and I think my complaint is, why is my yard getting staked and nobody else's? Now, I have photographs, if you'd like to see them, if you'd like to see what the property looks like.
Anybody wanna see them?
This is the before, and this is the backside and after, this is really to show what I think is city-mowed property.
This is between, this is the between Tim Holmes here?
Yes, this is East.
Okay.
But this is, this is the property on the day it was staked.
Where is it located? What, what area?
It's in Gun Club across from the airport. So again, this is the day it was staked, and this was yesterday, right before they mowed, and you can see some, in the middle, there's a, it almost looks like corn, so, on the east.
the city mowing and all that, still on schedule and all that stuff, it's picking up, coming up here. If we're gonna cite somebody, we can cite ourselves too, if we're not getting anybody.
At this time, Dennis, you're still involved, I think, in this area, if you would speak with him, I don't have an answer for you from the, from the council standpoint this, but Mr. Bonds, back here, will speak to you and we'll get a better answer for you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Does anyone else here to speak to lot mowing? The matter of public hearings for demolition, is anyone here to speak to demolition? Okay, we will close the public hearings and look at appeals, we have none. Citizens hearings, Patricia Ross, Patricia, if you will come forward, state your name, address, and you will also have five minutes.
Good evening, again, my name is Patricia Ross, and I'm at 103 Pine Hill Drive in Tupelo, Mississippi, and in War II. First of all, I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity, coming back again, because the last time that I did come, we did not get a, a resolve. So, again, I wanna first of all, thank Nettie Davis for taking the time when, last year, to come to War II, to, for my concern, when I couldn't get my, my current councilperson. And then, I wanna also thank, just gracious, and thank Troy Peck, who is the code enforcement officer, for, through the divine intervention, my pathway and his pathway, he was in my neighborhood, and I happened to be, God caused me to, to be out there, and he happened just to be in our neighborhood, and I was, and I'm gonna tell you something, the reason why I know it was divine, because I've been praying, because of the interactions that I continuously been dealing with as a citizen of my community, I've been in Tupelo for years, but in this, in that particular area for about close to 20 years, I have endured a lot of stuff with my back neighbor, and I believe some of you councilpersons have had the same things with various neighbors, backyard neighbors or neighbors on the side. But again, due to climatic conditions, in, not only in the city of Tupelo, but around this entire country, you know, it's time for changes. We know, and we've been aware, that's the reason why I'm here today, because I'm, I'm coming to propose a solution, and that is, it's time for, again, that the city enact some coves in, in the area of pine, large, 70, 80 feet pine trees, as well as trees that are, are very dangerous for residents who live in that community. And I'm saying what I'm saying is because if you've ever lived in a community, again, like years ago, you know, in the 60s and maybe very early on in this city, you know, it's just like anything else, people were able to build, and again, there were no, there, you know, there was no consequences because things were, trees were smaller. But we look at, time has passed, and we're looking at 70, we're looking at from the 60s up until, 'cause I've done my homework and talked to people who have been in War II and who have had various trees, but these trees now, we're talking about 50, they've been there long before that time, but they're 50 to 60 years old and, and, and real huge. Well, city of Tupelo is not like the country. You know, country, you got a lot of space, and, but in the city, you've got small plots of, of backyards or side yards, and I'm here to tell you, everybody has got to do their part. It cannot be to live in a community and to have it actively to be a good community, everybody has to do their part. On our street, we have a good, we have a good neighborhood, you know, everybody is doing their parts to make sure, if I put something out of my trees, it's coming, my leaves are coming, or branches are coming on your side, guess what? I make sure that I do my part. My neighbors on the right and left, they do their part, but the back of me, it's been a mess. And the side, the problem that's a mess is because it's on my property line, on my space, and it's on, and I'm tired of it, because it shouldn't, I shouldn't have to contend with that. That's why, living in a city such as we have, you know, we're talking about beautification, everybody is responsible for taking care of their own stuff, and I call it their mess, my mess, and everybody else's mess. We've got to do our jobs, and so therefore, I'm here today to ask that the city implement coves that would, that would, again, because we got dead trees that are still there, because nobody's not doing what they supposed to do. And everybody's got to do their parts in order to have a beautiful city, everybody's got to do their jobs. So I'm here today, again, you saw my pictures, I've got my pictures, you know, no problem, some of you saw them last time, and, and we're not talking about little trees, this is just a small sample, 'cause I, I always keep everything, but I've got, the problem is that these big old branches are extended on my, on my side, on my, coming on my patio, and it doesn't make any sense. It's time for change. So again, I am here today requesting that there be a city cove, and it's time, again, it's way past due.
Okay, man, time's up.
Okay, thank you.
We get the message, thank you so much.
And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm looking for an answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
This time, we will close the public agenda and open the regular session. Action agenda, we have no items, routine agenda, and the matter of council minutes of August 1st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? In the matter of bill pay.
I'm gonna say we pay the bills.
Check in.
We got a motion and a second to pay the bills, the bills were paid by Buddy Palmer, Lynn Bryan, Janet Gaston, and myself. All in favor? Six, in the matter of advertising and promotional items, we don't have any, at this time. Seven, in the matter of budget amendment number nine for fiscal year 2023, and donation of $18,500 from Just Jesus Incorporated. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Hannah is substituting for us, and she's gonna stay here and give us an explanation.
Okay, budget amendment nine includes the use tax, which is $2,092,740, the city received this amount in July, we're asking to pass that through to the capital fund, we're also asking for $10,000 to be approved, to pass through to the Spain House, that was received from the Department of Archives for last year's grant, we're also asking to move $25,000 to the fire department for repair of one of the engines, and that would come out of contingency money, not adding anything to the general fund. In addition to that, you'll see that the capital fund, we're asking for that pass through from the use tax, to be used for paving, as well as a donation from Just Jesus for $18,500 for a wheelchair swing, and I would like to defer to Alex Hornet, who is ready to mention a few details about that swing.
Yeah, I just wanted the council to know that this is a really good family, and it is Rodney and Jenny Rogers and their son Caleb, who has cerebral palsy, is the one who's behind this Just for Jesus, and they are gonna put some wheelchair swings out at Veterans Park, where the old snow cone place used to be, and just wanted to give you all a little history on that and who that was, and Councilman Palmer is hopefully in about three months or four months when they get this completed, we'd like to do a ribbon cutting and celebrate that, so I think it was a really good deal, just wanted to update the council on that.
All in favor? Item number eight, in the matter of approval of an agreement between the Mississippi Department of Homeland Security, the city of Tupelo, and to authorize the mayor to sign said agreement, fire department, truck.
So moved.
Second. Abby?
Yes, we submitted for and were approved for a grant with the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security. This grant is $101,768 for a 5, 500 pickup truck for the fire department, it can be used as a rapid response vehicle or to move essential equipment and personnel. So I'm just asking that's agreement before you is approved between MOHS and the city of Tupelo, and please authorize the mayor to sign that agreement.
Any question? Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Abby. In the matter of review approved properties for lot mowing. So moved. Second. A motion and a second, all in favor? Ten, in the matter of review approved properties for demolition. So moved. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? We worked on these yesterday at the, at the pre-council. Dennis, you wanna give us a short summary?
Is there one of these that came off?
We, we, we moved, removed number two on the list.
1207, uh?
Mount Vernon?
No.
Yes, sir, thank you, so, yeah, you, you have in your agenda packet there the description and pictures of each of these properties for demolition, and yes, answer the question, the one that came off was a 2607 Mount Vernon Road, book with the, and as always, we, shareholder property owners, we're happy to work with them, we ask the council to take action, and that, and we'll continue to work with the owners to resolve the situation, whether they choose to demolish it or bring it up the code, or we demolish it if need be. Happy to answer any particular questions.
So the one on Mount Vernon Road, are we just waiting for them to sort it out with their insurance company or something?
Well, in what we found, there was a, there was a bank still involved in it, and so we're trying to make sure that's cleaned up, and the owners indicated they want to demolish that, that is their plan. So I have a plan to get that one out.
Procedure problem, right?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Eleven, in the matter of review approved liens for lot mowing.
Move that we approve liens for lot mowing.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? On the matter of change order for STP-0430-0021 LPA, 107362-70100, construction of sidewalk crossing at various locations in Tupelo, Mississippi. President. Move to approve this change order.
Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Bonds?
Yes, sir, this is our railroad crossing improvement project at both the farmer's market there at Spring Street and in Kroger Park, and these changes were necessitated by field conditions, the design was designed some time ago and sat on the shelf as it walked through the process to get cleaners to get out there and get, get built, and we found that we needed to, you know, adjust our slopes on our sidewalks to meet ADA requirements, those kind of things, a little further back than was originally planned, so they added some quantity, so that's, it's an overrun in some quantities, there were underruns in others, so at this point, we've come out to $6,929.80 over. I will come back to you one more time as we finalize this thing, my next will be a final, a final change order, and that'll just be capturing all the mobilization, clearing and grubbing items, things like that, to close this job out.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thirteen, in the matter of vehicle transfer from Water and Light to Public Works.
So moved.
Transfer. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Chuck?
Yes, this is a truck, we just pulled out of auction this fall or this spring from Water and Light, and we can use it as a shop truck, we're just asking to transfer it to us, please.
Any question? All in favor? Fourteen, in the matter of bid approval of ARPA Project Gumtree Park Drainage Improvements 2023-029 PW.
How many will pull that approval?
Second. Motion and a second, Chuck again, please.
Yes, sir, this is our third ARPA project we bought for you, this is, we had seven bidders, like I said last night, I'm pleased with the bidding process, they're doing really good with the company in. Towns Construction was the lowest and best bid, and we recommend they receive the bid, and we hope to start mid-September on this one.
Could you tell me where in, in the park is this project taking place?
It's pretty much gonna go all the way across the park, Mr. Dan, it's gonna start up there by the storm shelter, it's gonna kind of circle around, back to the parking lot, it's, it's all that pipe in there, so we're gonna be all over that part.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Fifteen, in the matter of approval of a ordinance amending the Tupelo Water and Light Department's service practice standards, schedule of rules, regulations, and fees for utility service, Appendix A, schedule of rates, charges, and fees, customer service charges. Move to approve this ordinance.
Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Timmons?
Yes, every about approximately three years, we reevaluate those technical fees for water and sewer, and we could make those adjustments in the next course if you can see them be scheduled, so I can request your approvals for these improvements.
Any question? All in favor? Sixteen, in the matter of approval of an ordinance amending Tupelo Water and Light Department's electricity rate. So moved. Second. Got a motion and a second, Mr. Timmons?
Yes, as I told you yesterday, PVA for the past three years has implemented a pandemic relief fund, and this has been really good since COVID hit, all the increases we've seen in the electric side, so it's proven to be a good thing. The issue is that this goes away in September. The increase is 1.6%, so I'm requesting to continue that increase at 1.6%.
Any question? All in favor? Thank you. Seventeen, in the matter of CVB board minutes, August 1st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Chairman, there was a second page, there was a second piece to this rate increase.
You weren't finished?
Yeah.
Did I skip one?
The TGSA thing, that's the right.
Huh?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I skipped sixteen.
There's two parts to it.
Yes, two parts to it, let me go over that with you. FMC, this trap operation in the north end of the city up here, they put in a car crushing, spent millions of dollars, got on a car crushing equipment. To do this, they need a special rate, which is a cheap TGSA rate, which is a time of use rate. And that's... which is a time of use rate, and that's when they will operate this, this crushing equipment will be in off, off peak time where they get a better rate. And I just want to add that to the rate schedule, the TTSA rate, if that makes sense.
So what time will they be doing this? What time?
Actually, 7:00 in the evening until 4:00 the next morning.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor? Sorry, I overlooked that. Mr. Timmons?
At times I always kind of confuse them.
It was easy to confuse me. Uh, did we do seventeen?
Yeah, we, we did.
Okay, eighteen, in the matter of appointment of Emily Elliott to CBB board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Uh, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. President Beard and city council members, the Tupelo Restaurant Association has made a nomination to Mayor Jordan, and he has since moved that on to the council for approval. Uh, the CBB board has two restaurant, uh, members and two hotel members, and a CDF appointment and a mayoral appointment. This is one of the two from, uh, the Restaurant Association. It's a two-year term that will end in June of 2025. Ms. Elliott and her husband are owners of Lost Pizza Company in Tupelo and Starville. Uh, they're residents of Tupelo, and also they have kids that participate in our travel sports. And so she has a pretty good understanding of the challenges we face in recruiting youth in amateur sports tournaments to Tupelo. So I think she'll be a good addition to the CBB board.
Any question? All in favor? Uh, in the matter of contract approval for the farmer's market depot, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. McCoy again?
Yes, sir. The, uh, current farmer's market location is, and with the changes there, the crossing has presented some challenges. And Lucia and I have been working on this project, and we're excited to bring forward a design professional, uh, in Tech One Studio, Mr. Chris Root, who will be the architect on this project. It's exciting to create a new space for our farmer's market and also a place for people to gather, uh, you know, seven days in a week, not just when the farmer's market's going on. So we're excited to work with Chris. He's done a lot of projects with the city in the past and anxious to get forward and moving on this.
Question? All in favor? Twenty, in the matter of contract approval with Pryor and Morrow, and authorize mayor to execute document?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a, uh, design professional document also. Uh, this is with Pryor Morrow, and this is for Fire Station 5. We're, uh, just kind of getting into, uh, master plan, conceptuals, and then bring forward construction documents. And we're gonna ask Pryor Morrow to take the lead on that. We had a successful, uh, project with them with Fire Station 2 and look forward to working with them on Station 5.
Question? All in favor? Twenty-one, in the matter of an order authorizing the issuance of a credit card to the mayor for use related to his official travel and for other expenses related to the official travel of other employees and officials of the city of Tupelo.
So moved. All in.
Second. A motion in the second. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, President Beard. Uh, this is, uh, authorization to, for the city to issue a credit card for the, for the mayor to use to cover his travel expenses related to his official duties. Uh, this, uh, will not change how we operate, um, or how we cover travel expenses related to official travel, other than, instead of having reimbursed the mayor, the city will pay it up.
Is there a possibility that councilmen and councilwomen could get one of these cards?
It's possible, but you'll have to take it up with Ms. Hannah.
Okay. It, it took me over two years, so time's limited. Any other questions?
I do. Um, so when the mayor or anybody else in the city uses this card, the receipts come before the council, and then will, the company will pay to be paid?
Yes, they do. They, they, they're animating the property to pay each, each extra match will have to be accounted for.
All in favor? Twenty-two, in the matter of appointment of Stephanie Coomer as director of Convention Investors Bureau.
I'd be proud to make the, uh, motion to appoint Stephanie Coomer as director of Convention Investors Bureau.
I'll second it. Got a motion in the second?
Uh, God. Yeah, it, it's the recommendation from the CBB board, and my recommendation to you that we, uh, appoint Stephanie to the director of CBB. She has worked there for almost 15 years and worked closely with Neil and, and, uh, sorry, Neil, there'll probably be a, a smooth, uh, smooth, uh, transition into that role because she has been, uh, doing a lot of that role over the last year or so. Um, Neil has been a lot of city halls, so, uh, you know, Stephanie, anything you'd like to say?
I've been at the CBB for 15 years, and I've, um, worked under some great leadership. Neil's done a wonderful job. I started there under Linda Johnson. And I'm, uh, more than excited to take on responsibilities for the city of Tupelo and continue the success of the CBB show.
Any comment? All in favor? Twenty-three, in the matter of questionable number twenty-three, in the matter of appointment of Tanner Newman as director of Department of Developmental Services.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second. Uh, mayor?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, Tanner. Uh, you're almost officially back, so, uh, we expect to get on track and let Dennis get back to his, his regular job. So, uh, Dennis, we appreciate you filling in over the last few months, and, uh, everybody else that has stepped up in, in, in their, their roles. So, uh, my recommendation is to appoint Tanner back.
All in favor? Let's give him a hand. That hand was for you too, Dennis. We appreciate you talking to me. Uh, twenty-four, in the matter of, uh, order authorizing small expenditure to match Section 42 and our historic tax credit funds for Carnation Plant renovation project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. Lo.
Yes, this is, uh, authorized under the, uh, general statute, uh, to, uh, match grants for, uh, either state or federal, uh, programs. Uh, the federal programs that are involved in this are the National Park Service Grant, uh, uh, for historical tax credits and the, uh, Section 42 housing tax credit, um, under the IRS. Uh, there's also some state, uh, funds involved with the state historic tax credits for the restoration or renovation of the Carnation Plant. Uh, the company that is doing that has asked to be reimburse their building permit fee, which they have already paid. That amount is $32,540.30. And, uh, the, there's some other aspects of the order that kind of gives a history of the Carnation Plant. It's a pretty significant, uh, structure there. It doesn't look like much now, but it was a big thing back in 1927 when it was built. And, uh, this is going to, uh, this is coming from a fund that can only be used, uh, for low and moderate income housing. Uh, and so the, the plant is being renovated to become a senior living apartment complex. And so it meets the criteria of both where the money's coming from and where it's going.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? In the matter of order correcting minutes of 9/6/2022.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Logan?
Yes, this is a housekeeping matter, uh, one, uh, two-page exhibit, uh, that was, uh, you know, I guess it was 270 something pages long, uh, agenda, minutes. And two pages that were omitted caused everything to kind of move up and become the, the other exhibit. So we had to move all that back down, insert the, the right, uh, documents as an appendix, uh, to that exempt, agenda item, and then move everything down from there.
Question? All in favor? Twenty-six, in the matter of bid, uh, number 2023-dash-035AD, council chamber.
I move that we would approve the bid, uh, 2023-035AD for the council chamber. Chancellors.
I have a second.
Second. Second.
A motion in the second. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, in 2023 budget, uh, I'm sorry, is it 22, Kim? Yeah, it'd be 2023 budget, uh, the council approved $500,000 for upgrades to city hall. Those upgrades include the city council's chambers. As you know, we came back, came to the council with our first design, and the council felt that, uh, we need to be a little bit more prudent with our expenditures, uh, and to, uh, asked us to make adjustments. And I'm pleased to bring back to you that, that bid. That bid comes in at, uh, at $338,000, which is $2,000 under what we had set aside for the upgrades. Uh, the majority of that funding will be in, uh, in, uh, technology, and that's, that's our plan. So we're asking your permission to, to approve this so we can proceed.
Questions? Mr. Lewis?
What was the, um, increase? I mean, a decrease?
It, we, it said a 500,000. We set it at 340,000. It came in at 338,000. 2,000.
2,000? Under the, under 340.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions? All in favor? Twenty-seven, in the matter of bid, uh, number 2023-dash-033WL, North Green Street Substation.
I move that we would approve this bid, North Green Street Substation.
Second. Motion in the second. Mr. Timmons?
Yes, this is the next phase of building of the North Green Street Substation, which is the site where they'll actually come in and take about 18 inches off the top of the, uh, the top of the site, and then they'll totally rip out the perimeter of it and build a new street into Forbes Lane tied back on Forbes Lane. But the low bid was of Cook &amp; Sons at $638,934.
Any question? All in favor? Number twenty-eight, in the matter of approval of contract with Cook &amp; Sons LLC for bid number 2023-dash-033WF.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. Timmons?
Yes, Mr. Logan has, has approved and consented these contracts and I'm ready for the mayor's signature.
Any question? All in favor? We have no items on the steady agenda. Mr. Logan, do we have a need for executive session?
Uh, no, Mr. President.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. All in favor?